Thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and it is seven oh five P. M. And we will start our meeting with an update from our fire chief and emergency director, Michael Cassidy. If you would please come up and give us an update.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the board for having me in. I'm pleased to report that currently we have no new cases as of this evening.
Oh, correct.
Which means that since we started test results being reported to us, we have a total of eighteen positive cases, nine of which have been cleared, one of which was a fatality, which leaves eight active cases. We continue to post daily on the town's website, as per the direction of the board last week.
Excellent.
We've had very good compliance with physical distancing. We still have occasionally some concerns about the large volume of people on the rail trail, and we just want to remind folks that they need to make sure to maintain distancing even when they're out and about. Because, in addition to the CDC recommending facial covering for anyone who's out in public to support the physical distancing, most recent research also indicates that the coronavirus can actually travel up to thirteen feet.
Wow.
So previously, we had been using six feet as a guideline, but recent research is suggesting that it can travel as far as thirteen feet. Also, it can remain living on shoes, so we just want to be aware of where we're stepping and what we're possibly spreading to our families.
We're going to have to start wearing masks at these meetings because we're not thirteen feet.
Absolutely. That's why I am modeling that behavior this evening. We do also want to remind folks to stay at home, as per the advisory of the governor. Because there are more and more researchers showing that a large number of people can be asymptomatic while they actually have the disease and are not aware of the fact that they are spreading it to at-risk populations. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone who has donated supplies to supplement what we've been able to get through our supply chains. I can report that both the police and the fire department had equipment that was deconed and sanitized by an outside vendor that came in last week to the police department, this morning to the fire department, which is helping to keep our high-touch areas as sanitized as possible. We have deployed proper PPE to police, fire, EMS, and DPW workers. Also, with the assistance of the Board of Health, we have deployed masks, such as what I'm wearing, to Cole Court, Mission Springs, Council on Aging, and the food pantry. I do have confirmation that additional PPE that I ordered last month is shipping, and I'm expecting a partial delivery this week and anticipating the balance of it next week. I would once again like to commend our very resilient workforce from the town and from the schools. They have adapted very well to the changing work environment. And I do want to make sure to remind everyone about the importance of being aware of behavioral health. The longer that people are isolated and separated from loved ones, friends, and support systems, it becomes more and more of an issue. There are town services available, and we do want to make sure that people are aware of their mental health and how they're feeling, and also those of people that they love and care for.
Chief, can I interrupt you for a brief moment?
Of course.
That the conference line may not be open. Can you confirm that it is, Mark?
Is anyone there, the conference line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. It's open.
Okay, great, absolutely. And then one last thing before I take questions. I do want to, again, thank our partners in the media, specifically H. Cat, for publicizing your meetings, as well as the Holliston Reporter for publicizing your meetings, as well as any other updates that we put out to the public.
Great.
So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Mrs. Hind.
Yeah, so I will just say for next week's meeting, I will have worked at the hospital in between now and then. So, Mark, I'll take your lead on remote participation. I'm more than happy to wear a mask as well. I have not left the home to work in the better part of three weeks, so I am comfortable with where I am today. But next Monday, it will be different, so I'll just wait to hear from you, so I may not be on the present next week if we are still meeting in person.
And now that we know that it's thirteen feet and not six, we'll be wearing masks as well.
So I do have two. So I continue to hear from residents with concerns about the rail trail, and actually with concerns about the industrial park, particularly the Lowland Industrial Park with the activity down there, and some other businesses in town that are essential but are open. So I'll call again, especially for the businesses that are open, that we have some way of checking to make sure they are essential, number one, and not operating if they're non-essential, and that, number two, if they are deemed essential, that they have policies in place for infection control and social distancing and so on. Because I continue to get a lot of comments from residents saying, "This is going on, that's going on." And there's very real concern that even people visiting, coming into town to work in town, potentially could bring the virus into the town, and so a call for that. And then on the rail trail, a call for, I believe there was conversation at some point about reaching out to the friends of to see if we could get messaging up there. So as people access, it's tough because there's so many places to access the trail.
Right.
But just to kind of, you know, in any way, remind people to stay the six feet apart, avoid large groups, and not travel with others who aren't your family, kind of thing. I don't know where that stands with the...
I know they'd been doing some social messaging, social media messaging.
Yeah, okay.
And with regards to your question or comment about the businesses in the industrial park, again, if you give us the information about specific businesses, we can continue to follow up.
Sure.
I did follow up with one of the specific businesses that you mentioned last week to me.
Okay.
And heard back from their environmental health and safety folks, and they confirmed that they've got proper controls in place.
Yeah.
Hand sanitizer, masks, physical distancing.
Okay.
And I felt very comfortable, and they said I was welcome to stop by any time to confirm.
Right, okay, great.
But we've got good contact with most of the business community, so if there's a specific business we need to follow up on, it's easy enough for us to do.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Excellent. John.
I'm just being interrupted, but you dialed into the wrong ID number. This is from Chris Mail.
Well, we have somebody on here.
Jeff, they've dialed into the wrong ID, and I've texted him to correct the one.
Who's on the line? Who's on the line?
Sharon.
Sharon?
Yes.
So we have the right one now. Maybe that's the first time we did it.
It says, "Tell Jeff that they dialed into the wrong ID and texted him to correct the one." Correct the one.
Why don't we share the...
We did correct it. With the first time we did it, it didn't work, and we did it again, and it seems to be working now, so I think we're all set now.
It'll take some time.
Sorry. John, any questions?
No. So, Chief, again, thank you for all you do. Great support work, great updates to our board regularly. We, you and I had an exchange a couple of days ago about a notice on a public website about PPE.
Yes.
I saw you made a comment, and I thought, "Give yourself a chance to kind of address the fact that, you know, one of the officers was grateful, one of the fire department personals was grateful for the donation," made a comment that maybe you want to address at this point with regard to only having a few masks at one point.
Sure. Early on, we did have only a few N95 masks, but we were waiting for our supply chain to free up. And right now, I can report that we've got over three hundred and ninety-five masks in possession at the station, and we're still waiting for another five hundred. And that's part of what I'm anticipating, partial shipment this week, and then the remainder we're anticipating next week.
At no time, however, in the time that we've activated since, was it March sixteenth or something like that?
Correct.
Did I hear you say that our PPE was in extremis?
No.
So having a few masks might sound like it was extremist, Mike.
Sure. So, and part of the issue is also a risk analysis. So the N95s, early on, the CDC was recommending that those were only being used for healthcare professionals who were in direct, close contact with someone for a droplet-producing procedure. So basically, if a paramedic were doing an intubation on someone, and there was an expectation that we would be around secretions coming from their mouth, or BLS crew that was doing CPR, where they're doing compressions, and stuff is coming out of the mouth. So for the majority of our other interactions early on, these sorts of procedure masks, which we have several thousand of these, so the fact that N95s weren't available in large supply early on was never a concern. So we did get more N95s.
Right.
And, again, we were saving them for any droplet-producing procedures, but at no point did we not have the proper equipment for the risk that someone would be exposed to.
You opened up a point there that I was curious about from the very beginning, and briefly, I don't want to go into it in detail, but how do first responders deliver first aid, specifically CPR, during times like this?
So they would be using full PPE, they would be in a gown, they would have gloves on, they would have a mask, and they would have eye protection.
How do you, how do they deliver? Is it not mouth-to-mouth, they're using a bag?
Oh, no, we haven't used mouth-to-mouth for years. Yeah, there are airway adjuncts that we use. It would be a bag-valve mask with a silicone mask producing a seal on the face. And it is more personnel-intensive than normal, because in order to get a proper seal on the face, to make sure that you don't have secretions coming out the side of the mask, it really takes more people, one focusing just on the seal of the mask, and one actually squeezing the bag to insert the oxygen into the person's airway.
Got it. Thanks, Mark.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we have a little technical problem here, I think. We may have to go back and start over again.
Okay.
And hang up that phone call. Sharon, we're going to have to terminate you for...
From the phone call.
Or terminate the call.
Terminate the call.
Yeah, just the call. Is anyone else on there besides Sharon?
No, there was, there was several on there, and no one's on there, so...
All right, something's going on.
Yeah, something's going on.
Well, we will do it again.
You are the moderator.
Right.
So you're calling the seven-seven-four number right now?
Welcome to UCX Meet Me Conferencing. Please enter a conference ID and press pound.
And then you should be doing...
One, three, two...
Nope, you should...
Is it five, eight, zero?
Nope.
No.
You, as moderator, should be doing...
One, three, two, seven, five, eight is what I got.
Nope.
You've got, well, that's not on here.
That's a different one.
That's a totally different one. These are the two I have.
Yep, and this is what I was up.
All right, well, what do you got?
Try...
Seven.
I don't want to say out loud, because then we're giving people the moderator code.
You will now be placed into the conference. Press star for help.
So these are wrong, Jeff.
Different conferences.
Okay.
Yeah, that may be for bingo.
Yeah. Okay, could be. Whatever. Sharon, are you on?
James is on. I think it's working now. This is James Keith.
Okay, okay, great, James.
And I know some other folks, Sean Reese was trying to join as well, so he'll probably be joining shortly.
Oh, good. Yeah, we had the, we had the wrong ID numbers on the table here, unfortunately, tonight, but hopefully folks will get on now.
Mark, as always, you handle these moments with grace. Half the people in my family would be through the roof and not back again.
It is what it is. These things are going to happen, right? All right. Thank you, Chief, for the update. And Tina, next on the list is warrants.
Tonight's warrant is for five hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents, of which the school payroll is zero, and the town payroll is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Public comment, Tina.
Like every week of late, would like to just say that the Holliston Food Pantry is now serving one hundred and thirty-six families. The pantry will deliver groceries to anyone in need, no questions asked.
...for five hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And, not sure if that was a correction or... The pantry is in need of some donations of specific items. Those are listed on the website, hollistinpantryshelf.org. Donations can be made as well, monetary donations, to the hollistinpantryshelf.org website. And then the second is the Community Action Fund continues to offer financial assistance to those affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Visit Holliston's Youth and Family Services website, or call them to apply. Donations continue to be needed to support the Community Action Fund, and can be made by visiting hollistincommunityaction.org. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. John.
No, it's just a general message to echo what Chief Cassidy said. You know, we're getting through this, week by week. It seems to be going on forever, but hang in there, and please remember your social distancing rules and all the etiquette that's being preached. It seems to be working, our numbers are stabilizing, but don't let up, stick to it, and hang in there, so, thank you.
And just want to make one comment myself, and to thank our town administrator, Jeff Ritter, during these times. He clearly is answering about twice as many emails a day and phone calls, and trying to get back to people as quickly as he can. But he had well over a hundred emails to get back to folks, too, as well as phone calls. And so if he doesn't get back to you right away, he's doing the best he can, but he will try to get back to you within twenty-four hours. But try to keep in mind that there's a lot more going on with communication with residents and businesses at this time, and so try to be patient, and he will get back to you. Any other public comments? And if we have some public comments from the conference call, please identify yourself and your address, and then you may talk. So anyone from the conference? Okay, no public comment. We will now move on to the report of the town administrator.
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for those kind words. We are continuing to operate at reduced staffing. Right now, all the offices are trying to have, like, one person available in the office, so, you know, I'm here part of the time, Andrea's here part of the time, Donna's here part of the time, and we do that throughout all of the departments. And I just want to thank publicly, you know, Scott Moles from the, our health agent, and also Chief Cassidy, for an extraordinarily good job that they're doing in providing a sense of comfort to the community.
Yes, absolutely.
That they're looking after people's backs, and they're doing the best they can.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the town administrator a question about next Monday being a state holiday, if we are convening any town business on that day?
Sure.
I mean, my plan is to continually operating as is.
Is it a, is it a day when we should be conducting business? That's my question, it's a state holiday.
Yes, you can, you can conduct business on that day.
I don't think we've taken it up before.
It's not a federal thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for our town administrator? All right, next up is the water rate hearing, and my understanding is that the DPW Director, Sean Reese, has asked that we open the hearing, but vote to keep it open, as he's going to be getting some more information from the study that he's waiting for. And it's best that we conduct the open hearing when we get the study information.
So we have to open a hearing?
Yes.
I believe, so Jeff, you can help me out here, but I believe Jay Talaman weighed in on this particular issue. The hearing was never closed. So we opened it, we continued it to the next week.
Continued it.
Then the COVID-19 hit, and we never closed it. So that's as I understand it, but if you feel...
So the hearing is still open?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. So there's not a vote needed, then?
To open the hearing, correct.
Okay.
But we have a motion before us, requested by Sean Reese, to keep it open until early June. Is that right, Sean?
That's correct, team. This is Sean Reese, DPW Director. We expect to have the water rate study complete within the next, say, four to six weeks, so, you know, it'd be great if we were able to pick this up and get it taken care of by the end of May. If we, if you authorize it to stay until, until June, I think we'd be covered with that.
Okay, so...
Another four to six weeks, we should have all the information together, and then be able to present that information to yourselves and the public.
Okay.
Move to keep the water rate hearing open until early June.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Next up is a petition article. Jeff, do you want to talk about this?
So Leslie Doyle, I think, might be on the line.
You on the line?
I'm on the line. I'm Mrs. Gretchen Caldwell. Gretchen, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, do you want to kind of kick things off?
Sure. My name is Gretchen Caldwell, and I live at 121 Underwood Street.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to present to the select board.
Absolutely.
We realize that a lot of pressing concerns are going on right now in the community, and we appreciate your including us, this issue of your meeting tonight.
Absolutely.
We provided a copy of the article in our letter on Friday, and it has been endorsed by the Massachusetts Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the Animal League, Animal Legal Defense Fund, and the Humane Society of the United States. We had previously been before the board in August, and there is one significant change to be last spoke to you, and that is that the town business, which prompted the concerns presented tonight, is now no longer in business. As a matter of fact, the building is for sale. So this ordinance, or this article, will not directly affect any businesses in town, as there are no businesses who are currently trying to sell animals.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear, because I know that was a significant concern. We believe that the regulations presented are reasonable to protect animals and to protect consumers who may purchase puppies, kittens, or bunnies from a pet shop. As we discussed when we came before the select board in August, several families in town had their new puppies die within days of being purchased from a local pet store. Sadly, cases like this are not uncommon due to the inhumane conditions in which these animals are bred. Puppy mill is vastly different from a reputable breeder. Puppy mills are huge commercial facilities breeding hundreds and sometimes thousands of puppies a year under substandard conditions. The animals that are producing them are also not being fully vetted in terms of checking them for genetic health issues before they are bred, so therefore you have a higher predisposition to producing affected animals. The substandard commission, conditions of a puppy mill have been well documented in inspection reports from the USDA. Reputable breeders take care of their dogs, conduct proper genetic tests, and usually only have a handful of adult dogs, and meet directly with consumers to carefully choose who is able to purchase one of their puppies. They do not sell to pet stores. In fact, the code of ethics of the American Handle Club, known as the AKC, across the country, states that breeders can't sell puppies to pet stores. So any animal that is being purchased in a pet store has not come from a reputable breeder, or someone whose primary goal is to produce sound and healthy animals. So this ordinance would not impact local breeders. It would simply stem the tide of animals being imported from puppy mills and sold in local stores to unsuspecting customers. Our research shows that this proposed ordinance is supported by a large number of Holliston residents who seek to prevent new stores from cropping up, trucking in animals from out-of-state puppy mills. When we held an information table about this issue outside of Supret, more than one hundred people signed in support in just one hour. Quite a few residents are listening in on the conference call and watching the live broadcast who are concerned about this issue. To explain the issue in further detail, we are fortunate to have Kara Holmquist joining us tonight. She is the Director of Advocacy for the MSPCA, and she can share more about puppy mills and her experience working with other Massachusetts communities that have passed similar ordinances.
Thank you, Gretchen. I'd like to echo your statement, thanking the select board for taking the time to discuss this with us, especially given the time we're living in, and we know you're busy, and so we very much appreciate your time. I'm joining tonight on behalf of our more than one thousand MSPCA supporters in Holliston. I briefly, I'll briefly address some of the reasons that we support this measure.
Oh, can you give your name and address, please?
Sure, Kara Holmquist.
Alquist?
Holmquist.
H.O.L., Holmquist.
Okay.
Sorry, there's a little echo.
And your address?
At 286 Rosemary Street in Needham.
Okay, thank you.
Director of the MSPCA of Massachusetts.
And I work at the MSPCA.
Okay, great.
Since you make a claim.
Thanks, just so the residents know.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry for that. I wanted to add that Gretchen mentioned that there are no pet shops currently operating, or the Pick-a-Pet is no longer operating in Holliston. There are no pet shops right now operating in Holliston. I've confirmed this with the state shop license records. I think it's important to note that this ordinance would not prevent pet shops from operating, would ensure that they did so under a humane business model. Pet shops could partner with shelters and rescues to provide puppies, kittens, and rabbits to the public. And this article will not affect a consumer's ability to obtain a puppy, kitten, or rabbit, their choice directly from either a shelter or rescue, or from a reputable breeder, with a consumer conceded condition in which the animals are raised in or kept. The sale of animals in this manner is an animal protection and a consumer protection issue. This article, that will be on the warrant on June fifteenth, would help end the puppy mill to pet store pipeline, as well as protect consumers. Currently in Massachusetts, there are ten pet stores that are still selling puppies and kittens to the public, and we've examined records from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, which inspects and licenses pet shops, and the USDA, to document that pet stores in Massachusetts obtain their puppies from these large-scale breeding facilities and their brokers. And that was true when Pick-a-Pet was open as well. They imported puppies from some of the worst mills in the country, as shown by these records we looked at, and also this is reported in several news outlets, including locally the Metro List News. There are documented endemic violations at these puppy mills. The breeders can legally keep dogs in cramped, stacked water cages only six inches larger than their bodies for their entire lives, denying of socialization, exercise, basic memory care. The USDA also allows for mother dogs to be bred every heat cycle until they just can't anymore. And they admit themselves, the USDA admits, that they do a poor job enforcing these minimal standards, which aren't just minimal, they're basic survival standards. They are not humane standards by any means. And an internal audit of that agency revealed that instructors routinely ignore the suffering at these commercial dog breeding facilities and allow them to continue to operate despite repeat violations. So these are the places and where Massachusetts pet shops can get their puppies. As Gretchen alluded to, most, many customers are unaware of these conditions when they're purchasing animals from pet shops. I take calls, we get calls all the time from families that are devastated, and they're looking for help, for guidance about what to do when they've acquired a newly-acquired pet from a pet shop and the pet is sick. And the conditions in mills can impose exorbitant financial and emotional costs on consumers. Our veterinarians, Angel, can attest to the issues with pet store animals. These include breeding, which can lead to genetic disorders, and incur long-term bills for families, poor or lack of, and use no medical attention or medical treatment at the breeding facility. That can result in costs right from the get-go. At the first appointment, the veterinarian sees, right after the pet has been purchased from a pet shop, is common to diagnose, such as intestinal parasites, the milk which can be passed to humans, respiratory diseases, and skin disease. As the pet gets older, behavioral issues can develop, the lack of socialization at the mills, and the age where puppies are separated from their siblings and mothers, leading to aggression towards other dogs, and aggression directed at people, which then is now a public safety issue, and generalized anxiety that makes it difficult to leave the pet alone. And if the family can't afford this type of treatment, the animal may be surrendered to an animal protection organization or to the local animal control facility. Simply, current federal, state, and local regulations do not properly address the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet shops. And just quickly, I know you have a fuller agenda, there's two more points. Really no reason for pet shops to continue to source animals in this way. Thousands of pet stores operate at a profit by offering pet services and supplies that is a seventy billion dollar a year industry. Pet shops, the pet stores that don't sell animals are much less profitable than those, sorry, the pet shops that just sell supplies and services are much more profitable than those that sell live animals. And more than three hundred and fifty municipalities across the country, or jurisdictions across the country, have passed similar measures. We've worked on measures in Boston, Cambridge, Pittsland, Stonems, that are similar. They were all really widely supported when they came before town meeting or the city council, and I've checked recently with each of these municipalities, and they've had no cost incurred with enforcement. And the proposed Holliston violence model is modeled after these municipalities. And we also know that there are several other communities that are considering these for, other town meetings coming up in their communities and further down the road. for, other town meetings coming up in their communities and further down the road. So we hope that the Select Board will support this article. Happy to answer any questions now or at a later time. And I'd like to hand it over to Leslie Doyle, who's done a lot of organizing and worked with a lot of the residents and animal control officer to be able to bring this article to town meeting. Thank you for your time again.
Okay. Mrs. Hind, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to confirm, there are 1,000 or so MSPCA members in Holliston? Did I hear you correctly?
They're supporters, so we don't, I couldn't pull the data
Okay.
to say how much they've given to be a member, but in our database of communications that we send out, there are people who have voluntarily signed up to receive information from us. There's more than a thousand.
Thank you.
John, any questions?
I just have actually one question. In the event that our community does not have an existing retailer of these types of animals, effectively, what does this article do if it were to pass? Does it bar future businesses from coming into town? They wouldn't get a permit? What is the barrier here?
Yeah, so at this point, it would be preventative. But a pet shop, again, if a pet shop could still come in and open and they could sell supplies, other types of animals that aren't necessarily mentioned in this ordinance, but they could not, they could not sell puppies, kittens, and rabbits, but they could provide them to the public by partnering with a shelter or rescue to bring those animals and showcase them in the store. So they could still be in many ways a full-service operation, they just would not be sourcing those puppies, kittens, and rabbits from these puppy mills.
And what arm of town government would enforce that?
What, can you just, all right, Leslie, were you going to answer that?
Oh, I was just going to say that would be the animal control officer, and I can speak a little bit more about my conversation with her if you'd like.
No, I'm good. I just want to understand sort of the apparatus around the article. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion of support?
Well, that was my question.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to add a couple of details to clarify how we gain, gain to create consensus on this. This is Leslie Doyle of Sixth Apple Street in Sherburne.
Sure.
And I've involved a lot with helping prepare the article, so I'll go through this really briefly. So we met with the animal control officer, Donna Walsh, and shared the proposed article language. Her only question was what expectations there would be for the animal control officer if a pet store in town, in fact, violated the ordinance. So to address that question, we spoke with the President of the Animal Control Officers' Association of Massachusetts about how those regulations, how similar regulations had been enforced in other communities. What he recommended was having article language state that the animal control officer may seize animals, not that the animal control officer will seize animals. So we did incorporate that language, and that basically gives the town more flexibility in addressing any violations, which I'll talk about in a second. He also confirmed that no animals had been seized under this ordinance in other Massachusetts communities that had adopted similar language. So I spoke with Donna again about that. She was satisfied with that approach, and she basically explained that when we had a further discussion, that if she received a complaint, she would visit the pet store. If warranted, she would issue a warning. If the warning was disregarded and they just were completely ignoring it, she would have the option to seize the animals as a last resort. And then we spoke with the Shelter Manager at Bay Path Humane Society, who are already partners with Ashland Animal Control, and she confirmed that if a case did come up where it got down to the point where Holliston needed to take in animals from a pet store, Bay Path could house and care for them. So that would alleviate potential costs for the town of Holliston. So with that information at hand, and with the fact that there is no operating pet store in town, we met with the head of the Finance Committee, shared that information with him, and just for those factors, he was satisfied that there would, should be no financial impact of this ordinance on Holliston. And then, I think Gretchen mentioned, the article language was reviewed by Council for the Massachusetts Coalition to End Puppy Mills, and then was shared with the MSPCA, the Humane Society, and the Animal Legal Defense Fund, who have all endorsed it.
Any other questions?
No, so I'm just curious about the motion, though. What you feel is needed.
You want a motion of support, you said, for the article.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, traditionally, in my experience, the Board does not endorse petition articles.
Right.
We give them a forum to express their concerns, and then the article moves into the warrant with our approval for consideration by town meeting folks, which is where we vote.
Right.
So I would, I would advise personally, keep that standard, and just accept all the information that was shared with us tonight, quite effectively, I might add.
Yeah, we can
Very well done.
Take it certainly under advisement, and we could, you know, at town meeting, if one of us wanted to support it, we could do it at that time, so.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, the information presented was great, was thorough. Really appreciate everything that you shared with us, that you took the time to present such a compelling explanation of this article, and it's a well-written article, so thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. So just to clarify, yeah, it was a little confusing in terms of the direction we got, like, we got, from one of the committees said, contact you guys for endorsement, and then another said, just to present it to you, to make sure that you have the information. So it was a little confusing. So can you just clarify, like, in terms of next step, how we would know if you're supportive or?
So you would work with the town administrator to get the language just right for the article, if you haven't already, and?
Yes, we are, so just to clarify, so we already finalized the language through town council, and we gained, we gained the right signatures for it by the deadline and presented them to town clerk.
Perfect. So then, you know, it would be an article on the warrant, and we would, you would present at town meeting, where it would be voted on, and people can get up and, and agree with you or disagree with you. So it's always good to be well-prepared when you come to town meeting, because someone might bring up something that you didn't think of, and that's what it's all about at town meeting, so.
Right.
And then it would get voted on at town meeting.
Okay. So when you said the Select Board, the Select Board, are you saying the Select Board doesn't take positions for or against petition or article?
We usually don't. I, I mean, obviously, you know, your presentation tonight is, is very good, and, and it's pretty obvious that people are in agreement with you, but our practice has been that, that we would speak to it at town meeting.
Okay, great. Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time.
You're very welcome, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Facilities Manager update. Mr. Keast, are you with us at conference call?
Yes, I am.
If you would give us an update, please.
Sure. This is Mr. Keast, Facility Manager for the Town. I'm also a resident at 104 Fairview Street. There are three topics I'd like to cover tonight. One is a general update, the other is software, computer maintenance management software system, and then a request to review some DPW facilities. So to start, it's interesting time to try to get a new department off the ground.
Right.
Been, it's been a phase, and of course, I joined right when things were really bubbling up on the whole COVID-19 issues. But we've been able to make some, some good headway despite those challenges. What I wanted to do is review the, excuse me, the employment plan that was put together for this position, and, and go through and identify the things that have taken care of. First was, within the first week, to reach out to all relevant stakeholders and provide my contact information. That's been done. To add to that, I worked with Chris Mayo, the IT Director, to establish a facilities tab under the Department section on the town's website. And if you click on that tab, it'll open up a link to, you know, obviously has all my detailed contact information, but as well as a link to open bids that have been posted, as well as a work order submission request, and this is something new. This is basically an interim solution where town building arguments can submit a request for facility-related repairs or maintenance. By doing it this way, it allows for formal logging and tracking of the request, and, you know, a timeline set to, to resolve or, you know, repair the issue. Keep in mind, though, that this, this is an interim solution, where, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, but the CMMF tool, the Computer Maintenance Management Software System, will have a work order management component to it. But this is, until we finalize that, this is a workaround for, for that. I've spoken and met with all relevant department heads, boards, and committees. Would have liked to have met face-to-face, but, you know, we've resorted to phone calls and some are called distance meetings, where we may sit on the other end of a conference table. I've basically engaged with everyone except the Sustainability Coordinator, so I plan to set that up, and also need to engage with some folks at the DPW. But the meetings I've had have been primarily introductory in nature, but also gone to tell about the particular buildings that these, these folks work in, primarily the police station, the library, Pinecrest Golf Club, the Town Hall, and 1750. Again, really discuss matters related to those actual facilities. I haven't had the opportunity to discuss with the occupants of the senior center, as well as the fire station, due to the current COVID issues. I also reached out to Keith Boudet to talk to him about the school, albeit the schools aren't under my purview at this time, but it was important to get contact with Keith, offer any support I can, as well as understand how he manages the facilities there at the school, and take some best practices from that. Other thing I've done is research and identify software tools, and these are, this is a tool basically for work order management, preventative maintenance management, physical asset management, capital planning, monitoring. Chris Mayo, my South, reviewed five vendors, went through formal presentations with each of them, and I'm actually prepared tonight to suggest one vendor. And again, if you'll just table that, I'll talk about that as a separate item in a bit. The other thing that's outlined in the employment plan that we've, that I've started, is FY21 financial requests. This is a little bit of a challenge in that, you know, the, this position was originally going to be filled the first of the year, first of the calendar year, but I started basically three and a half months late, later than that. So don't, at this point, have a complete picture of the needs for FY21. I do have some items, some tactical-type things that we can prepare for FY21, but capital improvements, other requests for facility-related items, we're not there yet. Good news is, is we have until June 15th, so we will work previously to try to see what items we need for FY21, or at least get in the FY21 budget. The other thing that is ongoing is the facility condition, excuse me, facility condition assessment for all the town buildings. This is in process, and I've started working on locations at the Town Hall, 1750, where Parks and Rec is, and Pinecrest. This is a critical project. This is really the backbone and, and building the foundation for efficient use of our town's assets and preserving them. A critical part of this is this computer maintenance management system, and again, I'll go into that in a little bit as well. Other activities over the past 30 days, I've taken over 260 Woodland Street activities and the management of all the parties involved. I've created and posted an RFQ for the replacement of the doors and trim around the cupola at Pinecrest. I'm working on the replacement of the Town Hall doors and the septic system. Met with Chris Mayo on the Green Communities Program to gain a better understanding of what has been done thus far. I'm currently researching electronic passkey systems with Chris Mayo as well, in conjunction with the work going on, or the work that we're looking to have done in terms of replacing the doors of the Town Hall. Would be a good opportunity, at a minimum, to get the wiring necessary, or putting in these electronic passkeys built into the, to the structure around the doors, so that's why we're researching that now. Met with John Allen and Tim Harland from New England Golf to understand their roles, you know, at the golf course, and understand, you know, basically who's responsible for the facilities associated with the golf course, such as the maintenance building, the pump houses, and the snack shack. When I was reviewing the library with the, the information regarding the library, I came across a report related to some issues with the stonework facade above the front entry. And reading that report, I just wanted to make sure that everything was going to be okay, so we arranged to get the DPW truck, actually, one of the tree, tree folks, went up there with the bucket truck to review and, and look at the facade, to give us a level of assurance that we're, we're in good shape at the moment. It will need some repair, and that's, you know, obviously a discussion for another day. Working on some ongoing projects at the, with the police station, with some issues with the rain gutters, some pavement markings, and the sprinkler system. Also, I've mentioned this earlier, but conducted a review of the DPW facilities. Again, this is a review, this was a request from the Board, and not a complete facilities condition assessment, but a review, and I will go over that in a little bit. And then, lastly, conducted an in-depth review of the HVAC systems, HVACC systems at Town Hall and 1750, as well as Pinecrest. And the primary driver of that was on the, the capital improvement plan, there's $100,000 allocated for replacement of HVACC equipment at Town Hall, and $100,000 allocated for replacement of HVACC equipment at 1750. In doing that review, and I did that in conjunction with a, with a licensed vendor, those replacements aren't necessary, so those line items can be removed from the capital improvement plan. I mean, there are some minor maintenance things that need to get taken care of, but are in the hundreds of dollars range, not in the $100,000 range, so that, that's some good news.
Yes, indeed.
So that, that, the first thing I wanted to cover in terms of a general update, any questions before I move on to the software and the DPW facility review?
No, but I, I will make a comment for someone who just started recently. You sure have got a lot to talk.
Yeah, it's been, it's been busy. It's been busy. It's been great. I'll say that everyone that I've engaged with has been welcoming and is really excited to, to have this department in town to help them with, with issues that they've had to manage.
Yes, yeah, it's long overdue, so thank you. And Mrs. Hind has a question.
Just a quick question, James. When you say that the Town Hall and the 1750 Washington HVAC units can be removed from the CIP, you're talking about like five years of the CIP. That's what you're referring to?
The CIP had them under FY21.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Great. John?
And so those, and I actually talked with Sean Reese about this this morning. He reached out to Ben, and then Ben reached out to me, so we've had some communication, so that's, that's been process.
Okay, thank you.
And you're referring to Ben Sparrow from the Finance Committee?
That's correct, yes.
Great. John?
Just, James, I'll echo what Mark is saying. You sound like you've been very active. We appreciate that. One item that I, I wanted to check back on, though, was all the connections you've made. As you know, Town Hall's an historical building, and to the extent that any work that gets done here might fall under the CPC fund, I was wondering if you've had any conversations with Mr. Chamberlain or that committee about funding any future projects with that source of funding?
Yes, I have. That, thanks for bringing that up. Yes, I have spoken with Frank Chamberlain. I've also spoken with Melissa Kalsberg as well, about what funding can be used, especially from the, yeah, these sites, and it is available. It is available for renovation work. One of the things that I'm currently working on now is how far can we go in terms of replacing doors and, and putting in energy-efficient glass and all that, those types of things, out, you know, violating any historical concerns with the building. So once we have that clear, then we can certainly start reviewing how we can access some of those funds. Now, keep in mind, $53,000 or so, I met with Sharon, the town accountant, and that is available for this project, and that, that funding can carry over into FY21. So it doesn't have to be spent this year, this fiscal year, it can roll over into FY21. So that is available as well, and that has already been earmarked. So that is available as well, and that has already been earmarked.
Great.
One, one quick follow-up. James, with respect to FY21, working with Mr. Reese, have you started to identify funding that might be necessary to conduct some of these maintenance, facility improvement works, if you will, that, you know, need to get done on the fly? We don't have the benefit of putting them into a capital plan, for example. Has there been any talk about a mechanism or some kind of a tool to allow you to reach into a fund to make repairs as necessary?
Yeah, we've talked briefly about that. Like I mentioned earlier, we're just now reviewing the buildings and trying to identify the need. There are some projects that are kicking off, like the town hall doors and the work at, at Pinecrest, and, you know, the septic system that, that are in process. There's also the, the work at 260 Woodland that are all likely to need to be funded in, in 21. So I don't have a good understanding at this point, there's just hasn't been enough time of what the financial needs are going to be for 21. The good news is, is that, you know, we have until June 15th, or until we can get the final documents and the, and the warrants for 21, but no, I, I do not have a list of, of items and actions needed at this point that we could tap into those funds that you, that you mentioned.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just recommend that Mr. Keith continue to work with Mr. Reese to hopefully open up a dialogue with the finance committee liaison to potentially identify funds in FY21 that could be used for facility maintenance.
Absolutely, yeah, that's very important. And I'm sure Tina agrees with that as well.
I do.
No, Tina's vexed, keep your reader pace.
No, 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 I was just, James, I was preparing for tonight a little bit by looking at the budgets for the water and the highway. They have line items for things like building and vehicle repairs and maintenance and so on. I, we'll be honest, I don't know what that, that money is, has been spent on previously, but I don't know if that's what Ms. John is referring to, but it totals between the two departments, if we're talking highway and water, $110,000 in those line items for, I'm sure it covers a multitude of different things, but...
Yeah, my, my understanding currently, and there's likely not going to be any change for FY21, that these maintenance and repair budgets reside within each of the various departments. The DPW has, has that for their equipment and their facilities and the library, the same as both the police station and fire. And I think what John is, and we'll let John speak for himself, but I think what he's referring to is anything above and beyond. So we talked about the facade on the front of the library, you know, that, that wouldn't, that, those repairs wouldn't be under a regular maintenance budget, but it'd be, you know, something that certainly gets taken care of before the next winter season, and, you know, you know, do we want to, or do we have access to funds available to do that repair?
Exactly, that's exactly right.
I think that's what John said, now, correct?
Okay, yep.
And I, and I think through, through Sean, Mark, James should be able to get a good idea of what, what funds are set aside by, by the FinCom in the FY21 budget. That's all. He's exactly right.
Great.
We have money under the selectments budget as well for building repairs and maintenance, and that's like $60,000.
Okay.
That we use across all departments. If there aren't enough money in one department, we can always fund that gap.
Did you hear that, James?
I didn't, Jeff, you were breaking up. Can you repeat that?
It's hard for me to remember.
So, we have about $60,000 in the town hall budget account for facilities and repairs, and it can be used for various purposes in different departments, so...
Okay, great.
So that, that's part of the town hall budget, so...
Okay.
And you could talk to Ben Sparrow about that, too.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
This is Sean Reese. So James has not been really privy to the individual line items, but as part of my discussions with Ben this morning, we're going to start looping him into that.
Okay.
So just in DPW alone, so the water and highway have their own maintenance line items, we will be, or I will be reviewing those with James to see if there's room for any way we can become more efficient.
Okay.
So, we are going to make those improvements in regards to maintenance, how we can more streamline, but he would also be tasked with looking at that type of information for each department outside of the DPW alone. You know, so eventually he'll have a good understanding of what, how much money each department has for building maintenance, and then down the road, I think our objective is to kind of have that all pulled into a separate account where he'll have control over those, over those funding mechanisms, I think.
Right, right. And Jeff could probably tell the other department heads to share information about what's in their budget for, for repairs and so forth, and for facilities with the new coordinate. Okay. Great.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
All right, the next thing I would like to talk about is the computerized maintenance management system. The acronym is DMMS. I emailed a document later, earlier this afternoon, I don't know if you have a copy of that in front of you. But basically, this is a, a software system that really becomes the foundational backbone of any facility manager or department. And I put together a summary, and it's basically, we're, we're looking for a centralized database for all facility-related activities related to preventative maintenance, custodial work, repairs, work order requests, planning, asset management, vendor management, contracts, any contracts that we may have with particular vendors, you know, annual service, those types of things, which we all stored in there. Condition assessments for all of the facilities, budgeting and finance information, and real-time reporting capabilities. The advantage of this software is it removes the reliance on an individual's memory from history or, you know, when was the last time I changed the filter in that particular unit? All of that stuff becomes automated and documented. It really drives consolidation of vendor services, which results in consistency and cost savings. Also, it drives cost-managed proactive activities and reduces expensive reactive activities, like emergencies. And a critical component of this, of this tool is that it provides accurate forecasting for capital improvement, and also real-time analysis of assets. So for example, we have five HVAC units in town hall, and we can see that the annual maintenance costs for these units are, you know, you know, $1,000 each or something. But we have, you know, unit C that has $5,000 to $10,000 of maintenance costs over that year, and we're able to draw that analysis out of that software and say, okay, you know what, it's time to replace unit C, because you know what, the cost of repairs compared to other similar items within our asset group, you know, are outweighing, you know, the need, so we should plan on replacing that, and then we can then put that in the capital improvement. As part of the facility condition assessment that comes with this software is a grading of all physical assets, like includes doors, windows, roofs, identification of model numbers and serial numbers, if, if it's available, and also will tag the expected life expectancy of those particular items, that we can then say, okay, in year 2025, we expect to replace the windows of this particular building, and we can then forecast that out for 20 years or more. We can, we can set it up however we want, but the, the great news is that we'll have accurate forecasting information within this tool and be able to make some good educated decisions on, on best how to spend our money from the facility's perspective.
James, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
From what I can see based on the review of different services that you've researched, the total cost of any one of these packages exceeds $10,000, and so consequently, I think this is going to have to go out to bid. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I don't think we should be mentioning any brand names tonight, just sort of the functionality of what you desire or recommend for us to look at and then get the green light to go ahead and bid. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, we reviewed, and I say we, Chris Mayo and myself, reviewed five vendors. We saw a live demonstration of their tools. Two of the vendors stood out as excellent contenders, and then from a cost perspective, one of them came in as, as choice, as in terms of the most capability for the best price. I reached out to surrounding towns who use this, this tool, the software system, to, just to conduct sort of research on how they think it works for their town, and overwhelmingly, the feedback was positive. All of them said it was a great platform to streamline their operations and planning and help reduce costs. So it was really good to hear those folks offer that, that input. And it was also great, actually, to engage with like-minded peers in, in local towns as well, so...
Yeah.
So, in that document that you, you have, and I won't go through individually, but you can see the costs as well as the pros and cons for each of the various tools.
Yeah, it's very helpful, actually, the pros and cons.
And so you can, at your leisure, peruse through that and, you know, offer any questions or comments to Chris Mayo or myself on this.
Great. Much appreciated.
At this point, I would recommend that he begin working on a bid package, a scope of work, have that ready, and with Sean Reese's help, get some face time with the finance committees at May 1st, Jeff, when they do their transfers.
Yes.
So with some favorability from the salary savings in his account, I think Sean mentioned to me, we could possibly look at using that to offset potentially a cost for this project, depending upon what the bids come in at.
Right.
But I would encourage Sean and Mr. Keith to move forward with a bid package.
It's a very important tool, so that we, we have all the information that's needed, and it's, it really gives you an assessment, and it also hints as to when you should replace things, which I think will save the town a lot of money.
You know, absolutely. I mean, it really is, I mean, the town has, has voted to create this role, and this tool is really necessary to ensure the functionality of the role. I mean, it really is, it's critical to the success of, of this new department, so, you know, I strongly encourage that, that we, you know, go, move forward with getting this tool, but we will, I'll work with Sean, and we can put a bid package together and go from there.
I wonder if we should have a motion, at least, of support for this package from the board?
Sure, yeah.
If you would.
I'll make a motion to support the facility manager's request for a facility management software system en suite to direct him to prepare a scope under the direction of the Department of Public Works head to prepare and present to the finance committee for funding.
Excellent.
All those in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Much appreciated.
So I know I'm, I'm dragging on here, so I will go quickly, the last thing, and we can go in as depth as, as you want. I was asked to review the DPW facilities at, at two locations, one at 269 Central Street and another at 63 Arch Street.
Right.
You should have copies of those reports in front of you as well, and, you know, I can go through this, or would you like to review it at your leisure, and then we can set up a time if you have any questions?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we review it?
Mr. Chairman, look, could I just make use of his time and just hit some high notes? And maybe we can follow up with detailed questions?
Yeah.
If we need them. Having read this report, of course, it validates what I think this board has known and what it's voted on regarding the need for a new facility. The facility manager is calling a, a vehicle storage building located at the foundry on Central Street in critical condition, walls, roof, saw fit. This building is in very, very difficult shape right now. The, let's see, moving on to his other, the office admin and service shop area, which is, as you're from Central Street looking in, it's the brown building.
Right.
The report indicates it's in good condition overall. It's had a new roof put on, structure that looks in pretty good shape, windows replaced in 2000. This is more of a administrative area, and as a functional area, it's decent, but it does not complement, obviously, the vehicle and maintenance area that is in decrep-, you should see the pictures, gee, God, that's wild. There's some, there's some bad, bad facility karma going on down at Central Street. The, the brown building's in good shape, the other one needs to be torn down. Over on Arch Street, I'm not sure it's much better over there. Mr. Keith, could you give us the high notes on Arch Street?
Yeah, sure. So the, from the street view, you know, the building looks in reasonably good shape, but when you get into, you know, areas like the roof and the connection between the, and I don't see, I have the picture in front of you, the yellow section of the building and the, the metal storage, vehicle storage area, so you have the office admin and the service shop. The roof that connects the, the two buildings together is a flat roof that really collects rainwater from the vehicle storage and the service shop and channels it all into one spot and has created some erosion to the foundation block on the side of the building. The fuel depot area, I didn't see any fire suppression systems associated with that, that's something I definitely want to look into. The grounds had a lot of debris around the area. A lot of the equipment was not undercover, was stored outside. Suspect that's a result of not having the space to store the equipment undercover. The, there are stout buildings that store road maintenance, salt, sand, and chemicals used to treat roads in winter. And, you know, one of the buildings, the sides are beginning to bow out because of the, the storage of the items within the building. It's been braked on the side, but it's showing signs of it, you know, bowing out on the side, and would need to look at it from a structural standpoint to see if there's anything more serious going on there. The, the, buildings are covered, but it's unclear what the drainage is like around those areas. So this area, the whole site sits above a wetland area, and from a water runoff standpoint, it's unknown. I didn't see any sort of barriers in terms of collecting, you know, any of that road treating material and preventing it from, you know, rolling down and, and, you know, getting into the wetland area. You know, is it doing that? I don't know, but that's something we should definitely look at, just from, from the, the great difference between the site and the wetland area.
Right.
There are some leaks in the roof, or at least there is evidence of leaks in the roof, you know, in, in the employee changing area that, that should be addressed as well. On the floor, concrete floor in both of the buildings, there's sort of cracked and heaved and presents, you know, trip hazards as well. So that's just some of the highlights that I identified, and they're all sort of laid out in that report.
Old buildings, very old buildings.
Overall, it would appear that you have evaluated three buildings on Arch Street, and the best is fair condition. Is that correct, Mr. Keith?
That's correct.
And it goes as far down as critical and mostly poor. These buildings are sort of pulled together in, in use over the last several years, but as a result, the wear and tear, I think, as you mentioned, with the water infiltration and structural issues. and structural issues, we've got some problems up on Arch Street, too. Mr. Chairman, I think there are quite a few pictures here that tell a story, and I'd love to be able to put them up on a common drive somewhere where people in the finance committee or other stakeholders can look at them and see for themselves how, how the conditions exist in these-
And they put them up here on the wall for residents.
Yeah. I know Sean, Sean's on the line. I know Sean saw on this report, but, I mean, Sean, would you agree with the assessment of Mr. Keese on both these facilities?
I think it's a fair assessment. I think it gives you, it gives you a current condition assessment. I don't think it's any, nobody should be surprised, Sean.
Yeah. Well, the thing of it is, is no one really, residents really don't go to these facilities, so that I think your idea about posting the pictures is a good idea, so that residents understand at town meeting, this is what we're talking about.
Exactly.
I agree.
So what I can do is I have all the photos on, you know, Google, you know, the town's Google Drive. I'll work with Chris Mayo to basically create a photo album, and then, you know, the link to that can be shared. And we'll share that with the board, and then the board can decide how to share that throughout the community.
Right. That's a great idea.
One more comment. Again, as James said, or, I will, this is a high-level overview.
High-level overview?
Of really that tool, that software system. Once somebody really gets in there, then you really find out what the, you know, I'm sure it's just no issues.
Right.
You're absolutely right, Sean. This was just a, you know, building envelope view. I was there for a couple hours reviewing, you know, a facility condition assessment. Would spend several days there, really going through every detail of the building.
And should we, I mean, obviously, these things take time to repair, but I was concerned about, you mentioned lack of fire suppression at the filling stations. Is that something we can do sooner rather than later?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to the chief about that, and get his opinion on, you know, the need.
And how best to do it?
Yeah, or know how best to do it. Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I would like to see that soon, because that seems to me as a hazard.
Mark, can I make one comment?
Yes.
James, so I read over both of these preliminary reports that you put in, that you submitted, and you have a line in both of them that says, "This is where potential safety and code concerns will be identified later down the road with a more detailed review of the buildings and the facilities." I just wanted to add one piece to that. I'm sure you've already thought about it, and it's on your mind, but I just wanted to put my two cents in on this. I think one of the most compelling things about this sort of review, when it comes to the DPW and water, well, the water and highway buildings, is the idea of improved energy efficiencies, and then also improved vehicle storage for prolonging use of the vehicles. I think those are two pieces that are really important to pull into any more detailed, in-depth assessment of the buildings, is where, do we have deficits? Where could we see improvements for, again, energy efficiencies and vehicle storage for prolonging the use of our vehicles by keeping them protected and so on?
Absolutely. Those are, that's great. You know, the energy usage would certainly come up in terms of the, you know, the needs of the facilities in terms of equipment and personnel and whatnot would also be addressed. But, you know, that's definitely a good point to bring those up.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
Are you suggesting that we explore those options going forward for these facilities?
I am suggesting that we should identify if there are areas where we could improve energy efficiencies.
Because I don't, I don't mean to be dismissive of your remark, which, of course, I understand. But from my position, I don't want to put another red penny into those facilities in terms of structural. I'd be, I'd be looking at the programming down the road to include energy efficiency models and things like that under the new design.
I understand. I think, I think it's more than, if I can rephrase, I was maybe trying to be too kind in my comments, if you could identify deficits.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, so that's everything I had tonight. Are any other questions?
I think we're all set. Thank you very much, James. You gave us a lot to think about and look at, and we appreciate all of your hard work.
And thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the sustainability coordinator, do we have Mr. Zetek with us?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
How are you?
Good.
Very good. Hi, folks. Hey, thank you for the opportunity to come in this evening. I know you've had a busy meeting, so I'll be as expeditious as possible.
Okay.
I really appreciate all you're doing there, and especially the safety and health team that's being led by Chief Cassidy.
Yes.
So, again, just like with everybody else, the sustainability coordinator efforts have been greatly impacted by the pandemic affecting us all. You know, whether it's the federal state funding, question marks, timing with grant programs, et cetera, let alone just trying to figure out how to do business, conduct our daily business in a different way, a completely different way. So, what would we normally be doing right now? I'd be in front of you talking about the fact that the 50th anniversary of Earth Day is right around the corner.
Wow.
When's the last time you heard somebody talk about the 50th anniversary of Earth Day? It's just a really, it's a true indication of the nature of this pandemic changing completely everything in our lives. So, so that's coming up on April 22nd. So, even though this is a tragic situation that we're under, there's, there are some silver linings, and just one of the few that have been noticed already is the tremendous reduction in greenhouse emissions as a result of the engine power conducting business. So, I'm just mentioning that briefly, and there'll be other things that'll be coming out as a result of this pandemic. But especially with Earth Day coming up, and us not being able to celebrate it like we really had hoped to, it's important that we would make every day Earth Day. So, one good thing that happened recently was the, we were able to have a Zoom meeting with the 350 Mass Upper Charles Climate Action folks, who had helped create the sustainability coordinator position with your support. That took place last week. It was also enjoyable, because the new sustainability coordinator for the town of Sherburne, Dorothy von Herter, joined in.
Oh, gorgeous.
So, I know the 350 folks really appreciated seeing both of the sustainability coordinators that they had, you know, with their grassroots effort helped create. So, they were very pleased and wanted to pass along their appreciation to you this evening.
Very nice.
So, onto some of the local programs, the aggregation. Of course, the community choice program, there's been some good progress on that, since being in front of the board the last time. Most recently, public notice was put up on the town website detailing the terms for the April through December period of the community choice program. That's up on the select board webpage, and also the sustainability coordinator's website. The next steps in the process regarding the community choice program relate to revising the aggregation plan. That's before the Department of Public Utilities. Our broker, Colonial Power Group, just submitted a draft of the revised aggregation plan for us to review. The next stage is for us to conduct that review, and then post it on the town website, on the main page, in the town clerk's page. We'll probably get it on your page as well, and the sustainability page. It'll be up there for 15 business days or three weeks for public comment. So, the community will have an opportunity to review the program. And then, after that point, we'll get any comments through the select board for review. And if things look good, you approve it, and then our broker will get that sent off to the Department of Public Utilities for their review. The next part of that relates to, that process is the funding for the energy manager adder. And I know you've been following up in your last couple of meetings to make sure that that is still on the way. Jeff's been helping out, and our broker has been in touch with Mary so that, to help make sure that that funding is flowing appropriately, probably beginning in July at this point. And the only other thing is, you have been focusing on is just making sure there's a town meeting article to help facilitate how that would work out. And the last stage in this, regarding the community choice program, is, comes at the end of the year, and that's when the new supplier, Nextera, comes onboard, providing, providing the program for the community. And that's when the new pricing that was recently negotiated will come into play, and the, as well as the add-in service that residents will have an opportunity to choose, if they would like, which would be at the maximum green level possible. So, in summary, the, you know, there's been good progress. We'll just continue to, it's sort of in the administrative stage for the next week or so. There'll be a document at that point up on the town website for public comment. And then we'll move forward, getting the, seeking the Department of Public Utilities approval at that point. Any questions on the aggregation?
Yes.
Yeah, I have two quick questions. So, the DPU revision, what are the elements of that that are under review that need the posting?
So, the, I did, we just received the draft plan from our broker today, so I haven't had a chance to review it in full.
No problem.
It's pretty pro forma. There, my understanding is, there are very few changes. Basically, we haven't filed a revised aggregation plan since the program started back in 2015. So, my understanding is, it's more just of something that is good to be up to date with the DPU. It includes new terminology. It also includes the information about the fact that the town is added in the energy manager adder.
Okay.
So, and also, after doing a review, and we have that internal review, if there's any questions of any type of major changes, obviously, we'll run that by you and keep you updated.
And if I understand you correctly, you will need an article still for town warrant for the landing place for that energy manager adder to end up.
That's what's been recommended, to make sure that the process flows efficiently.
Well, I think it's, it's the energy adder money plus anything else. It's a repository for associated receipts that can support the position. I believe Mr. Ritter, we'd ask Mr. Ritter to talk with our town accountant about some language for that. It would be a revolving fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, the article has not been written yet, but it will be shortly.
Yeah, something like that. So, it's, it's more than just the aggregate, the energy pieces.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, onto waste production. So, this is a little bit more on the administrative side of things, but we're working with Jeff and the state wrapping up the documentation related to the recycling and trash carts that the town had secured last year. So, again, we're just trying to wrap that up in a timely way, so the town will get reimbursed the funds from the state. On the similar nature, the DEP just announced last week their new round of sustainable material recovery program grants. The town has tapped into this in the past, like we just were talking about. The, at this point, they're still looking for an application to the DEP in mid-June. That's their standard timeline, so no changes as of this date. They're still reviewing whether that's going to be doable or not. Looking forward to your input, and I can give you some updates on some ideas the next time I'm in front of the board. The one key program that we, we've been taking steps to stay in with, and perhaps increase our participation in, so we can receive some additional funding from the state, would be the recycling dividends program. That's one of the key programs within the Sustainable Material Recovery Program. Also, we're continuing to explore the food waste and textile recycling initiatives that we're trying to get onboard in the town. Unfortunately, just like with many other things, that's taking a little bit of the slow road due to the pandemic that we're facing. Vendors like this that are providing curbside services are just struggling to survive. And it's a challenge for all involved, but there's some, potentially, some, some good things coming in the future. And I just would look forward to updating you again as things progress. There have also been some recent webinars and educational things regarding the state of the recycling and solid waste industry nationwide, but in particular here in Massachusetts. It's becoming an incredibly costly service for both the trash and recycling. And there's continues to be efforts trying to figure out why we've gotten to where we are, and how can we get out of it the least costly way possible? And that's both from a financial point of view, but also an environmental point of view. I would like to mention that he was in an outstanding frontline program about 10 days ago regarding this issue. Encourage residents and you, good folks on the board, if you can, to just type in the Google search "frontline in plastics." And really, if you have a chance, it's just a little less than an hour. We tend to have a little bit more time on our hands nowadays. And it's a very informative program. It really highlights why we should be shifting our energy away from recycling and go to the beginning of the process, which is trying to reduce how much waste we generate in the first place. And that ties in with, that comes at it from both the environmental point of view, but certainly from the cost point of view, and from the sustainability point of view.
Matt, can I interrupt for one second? I was on that webinar last week, and one of the things they mentioned about recyclers is the recyclopedia, and they gave, I believe, a link that we could, in theory, post on our website for people to access, to know whether or not something could be recycled?
Yes.
Do we have-
We actually have a link, Tina, we actually, thanks for bringing that up. We actually have a link on our website, but right now, it's a little bit tucked away on our waste minimization page, I believe. So, to your point, I'll work with Chris on getting that in a more prominent place, along with a little bit more updated information about what type of steps folks can do at their homes, to try to work on waste production and waste minimization.
That'd be great. Thank you.
It's a great tool, though, because you, Tina, thanks for bringing it up. And just again, one of the challenges for all the good folks in Holliston, who they want, they just want to know what to do. Just tell us what to do, so we can do these things properly. Unfortunately, in the recycling field, the rules have changed in how to prepare things. I've really adapted a lot, a lot in the last couple of years due to changing world markets for the recycled materials. That recyclopedia recycle smart tool that you just mentioned on the website is a great way for residents, if they have a question, they type, they go there, they type in the material that they're not sure how to, what, how to get rid of it. And the recyclopedia will provide information whether it can be recycled, can it be reused, and offer some tips on how to do those things. So, that'll be, that'll be, thanks for bringing up that resource.
Great.
Onto a couple of the other projects, trying to add, continue to add value. The MVP program, a couple of things, we, the grant we have. Chris did a nice job checking in last week with the state to see if they really had any resolution about the status of this current grant found in terms of state funding, timing, et cetera. They're still trying to sort that all through. There's another next round of the action grants that's starting to be in play. They had a webinar last week about that. The next round of grant applications for MVP, for the action grants, and for those communities that are behind us and need to do their planning stage, will open up probably at the end of the month, and will last for about six weeks is what they're planning for. So that would be roughly to the beginning of June or so for that grant application timeframe. Related to that is the, we're participating with the Charles River Climate Compact, and that's a group of municipalities in the Charles River watershed. And they are looking to apply in this next round of applications for the MVP program. And they're seeking support. I'll look forward to coming back to you perhaps at the next round to see if we're interested in participating in this. And I think we absolutely should explore participating. Their focus is going to be on flooding and climate change modeling of the Charles River watershed. So, that's a quick overview on the MVP. Any questions on that one?
Do we need to respond to Kim with any kind of final response? Or, I know there was some communication with her at the end of last week. Is there anything that we need to pick up and?
I did communicate with her.
Okay.
And I told her at the moment, my feeling it was, the program is on hold.
Okay.
Yeah, and that ties in with, a good question, and that ties in with, you know, us trying to get a pin down the state for some better feedback about what's going on there, because there are so many things involved with that.
Okay.
Onto the green communities, that, again, the deadline for applying for the fourth round of the green communities was extended for, until the very beginning of May, I believe.
Okay.
Chris has been, again, doing a real good job leading on that. So, he's been working on preparing the, our application. And that's going to include things such as the police station, the Boilards Police Station, and the converting of the lights up at Pinecrest Golf Course, which will be a real nice place.
And thanks to Chris Mayo for all that he does behind the scenes. A lot of people aren't aware of just how effective he is, so thank you, Chris.
He's very important and a key leader on this.
He really is.
So, yeah, again, the fact that we're onto, Mr. Chairman, the fact that we're onto our fourth round of this successful program, just backs up your point to the T.
Yes, absolutely.
A couple others smaller, I've- Couple other smaller, brief updates, dams, the states, we're just need to continue to get in administrative good stead with the state, so we're going to be moving forward with some emergency action plans getting developed. The Lennard Engineering for the Lake Winthrop and Factory Pond Dams, as well as inspections are going to be taking place at the Houghton Pond Dam and Factory Pond and Lake Winthrop Dams.
Right.
And then one other one is the, on the solar side, very pleased that, again, we have a big person and vendor helping out with this, Greenblatt Beacon Integrated Solutions. So, tomorrow, there's a call with the team involved on the project that'll be taking place at the solar, the solar project at the landfill. Really looking forward to that call tomorrow, and knowing it's in good hands, had a really good conversation with Beth, getting caught up on things, and they're in very good hands on that one.
Great.
So, I think that's just to speed up your meeting, and that's a pretty initial overview.
Well, thank you, much appreciated, Matt. Any other questions from that?
No, Matt's doing a terrific job. Thanks for what you do, Matt. Keep up the good work.
Yep.
Happy Earth Day, thank you.
Very great folks to work with.
And we hear it's your birthday.
No, I said happy Earth Day.
Oh, Earth Day. I thought you said birthday, and it's, oh.
It's sort of fitting it came around this way. It's my mother's 93rd birthday today, so I will pass along the birthday greetings, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful.
It's all good.
Stay safe.
It is all good. All right, thanks again, Matt, for your report.
Thanks so much, folks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, we have some board business here, meeting minutes, March 30th, 2020. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So, I had contacted Jeff to see if we could hold till next week so I could get some edits back.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's okay, absolutely.
Did we have to hold meeting minutes last week for the previous meeting as well? I thought you indicated they weren't ready for prime time. Can you check on any backlogged meeting minutes, Jeff?
Sure. We have these, and we have April 6.
Right.
April 6 has been more than half drafted.
Got it, okay, so there are a couple. All right, thank you.
All right, we have an appointment in the Youth and Family Services Committee. We have a request for Kate Cunningham to the Advisory Board.
Move to appoint Kate Cunningham to the Advisory Board. Jeff, is that a one-year or a three-year appointment?
2022, I believe.
Okay, for a three-year appointment, no, two-year appointment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Jeff?
There was just some discussion, I think, with Tina and the, about consolidating some of the articles under the capital article.
Yeah.
Um.
You've sent the draft in our memo file there?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't taken any action on it yet.
Okay.
Yes, I wanted to float the idea. I was going to bring it up under other business, but we can do it now if you'd like. The four articles for the feasibility studies.
Yes.
It is allowable, and one could consider also advisable to move them to the capital item request article, to not have them as standalone articles, but to treat them as they are, which is ancillary to capital projects and therefore funded out of the capital expenditure fund. And so, I wanted to bring that before the board to see, to hear your thoughts, receive some feedback from, from our town council to say again that it's allowable and perhaps advisable, and also receive some comments back from Ben Sparrow on the Finance Committee. And the feeling that to treat these studies as capital requests is appropriate, again, because they're ancillary to capital projects.
Right.
And it's my impression that after the October town meeting warrant discussions, heading up to town meeting, that we had, we had robust, full discussions about what would go into that capital article, and I would have no doubt that we would do the same again.
Right.
And so, yeah, I wanted to bring that up as a possibility.
Well, I think it's a good idea. John, any questions?
It's intriguing. I have not seen that before. I don't object. I do think we should have a discussion about the pros and cons with the Finance Committee through our liaison. It would help streamline things for sure, but on the other hand, I also want to understand any cons that might be associated with that, so.
Yeah, and I think the town council thought it was a good idea and recommended it, so maybe, maybe talk with town council too.
I think one, you know, when, when discussion comes around to the MSBA feasibility study for a new school building, I think those discussions had talked about the feasibility study being funded out of the capital expenditure fund. So, I see some consistency there as well, that, again, a feasibility study for a large capital project of any sort is, could easily be viewed as a capital request.
Right.
And not an operating budget expense, so.
I like the idea.
I'd like to explore it if the board's okay with that.
Yeah, let's explore it, but also if we can get some, an email from town council with the reason why they, they think it's a good idea, it would be nice to share their thoughts, if you could do that, Jeff.
As the liaison to the Finance Committee, would you, would you like me to speak to them about it at their next meeting, or talk to Ken to see if I can get it on the agenda, or how would you like to handle that?
These articles you're referring to, the DPW article, is that correct?
Sidewalk DPW.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, I would probably walk them through Ben, and then tomorrow evening, introduce them to the Finance Committee as a, as a talking point.
Right.
That may require additional offline dialogue, research, and so forth, just to introduce it to them as an option.
Sure, okay.
You know, we, we still have some work to do to consider the content of what this warrant's going to look like.
Right.
We.
And the order in which it's going to be.
The order, the content, you know, there's, so far, there's a lot of signals that 21's going to be austere, and so, you know, we'll have to put some thought into the inclusion or deferment of articles like this.
Right.
And any other articles for that matter.
Yeah.
So, as I think about it, you know, I seriously want these articles passed and the town to move forward on these, on these studies, but I know the Finance Committee, some members have expressed some consternation about the timing.
Right.
So, it's something that has to be discussed, ultimately, so.
Absolutely.
I'm all for doing that, so.
Okay.
I hope to be on the, on the call tomorrow night, but in the event I'm not, feel free to carry the water on that, Tina. I don't object, so, either way.
Okay.
Just introduce the issue and let them know what we're thinking, and pros, cons, and.
Well, because, you know, I think that there's a very compelling piece to this, which is that the budget, the, sorry, the balance of the capital expenditure fund is $6.4 million. And I think that to keep priority projects moving ahead during this time, funding it through the capital expenditure fund is, is strong leadership. We're not saying that we're going to go and build anything right now, but we're going to do some of the studies. And I also like that it puts everything that's being asked for, for capital projects, whether it be from any department, it puts it on the same, same level for consideration, because you're talking about the same funding source, the capital expenditure fund, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Jeff, anything else you want to talk about with the town meeting warrant?
No, I don't think so.
Just one item.
Yes.
I cannot recall if it was last week's FinCom or the week before, but have we shared with them any updated versions of the warrant, Mr. Chairman?
Not in the last two weeks, no.
Okay, because I do recall there were some edits that came out of one of their meetings.
Okay.
We had to move the assignment of a library article, for example, from under the Board of Selectmen to.
Trustees.
Yeah.
That's an edit, yep.
We needed to add Matt's article in, so there's some work to do.
Yes, yep.
I'm sure they'll be hankering for that content pretty soon.
Okay.
And in addition, Mr. Chairman, I think some, some other boards and committees owe us a visit as part of our capital project, so do we have any upcoming meetings scheduled with those?
School committee, parks.
I haven't looked at the agenda for next Monday.
Okay.
Not really, but I will be.
That's when we'll probably put a couple of them on there.
Mm-hmm.
My personal preference is to get a lot of the administrative work out of the way now, and then take that extension period of time that we put into town meeting and let the financial pieces fall out with it.
Right, right, right. We need some time for that.
We will, so.
Absolutely.
More administrative work and get it out of the way now, the better off later.
You would anticipate next week that you would invite some of these departments in to present their capital requests?
Some, yeah. Like Sean, for instance?
As soon as possible. Don't wait.
Why wait, you know?
We had petition article tonight, so, what's going to mean?
Yeah, all right. And, all right, moving on, financial impacts of coronavirus. It's unclear right now what the impacts will, will be of this pandemic. And we have a, we have a suggestion from the.
It's motions.
A motion that they would like us to do from the, the assessors. So, you want to discuss the assessors' motions?
It looks like we have a couple of different things to consider. One, from the Board of Assessors, which is the due date for exemption and deferral applications, delaying that until no later than June 1st. And then we have, for the treasurer or collector, we have two things to consider, one which would be to waive interest on certain payments made after due dates, and then the second would be to delay real estate and personal property bills until June 1st. So, I think we have three things to consider, and I think we have Sharon and maybe Mary, or we have Sharon for sure on the line.
We have your town accountant on the line, Sharon.
And we have Mary on the line.
And Mary, our town treasurer, thank you both. Do you want to talk about these, Mary and Sharon, share your, share your thoughts, pros and cons?
Well, the first one is at the request of the Board of Assessors to change the due date from April 1st to June 1st for the filing of exemptions and deferral applications.
Mm-hmm.
They've requested that one.
And that seems to be in line with, with what we've done with, with postponing the meeting, so that's very logical.
From talking to Kathy Pierce, they are waiting for a couple of our elderly taxpayers who always file exemption applications that have been sick and can't get out to come in with their application, so they want us to consider that motion for tonight.
Okay. Do you want to address this now, this, this one, and then we'll move on to the other two?
That's totally good.
And discuss this first one, John?
Sure, did the Board of Assessors take a vote on this, Mary?
I don't know that, John. It came up at our finance team meeting last Tuesday, and I think Mary Greendale has waited on it, but I don't know if they've taken a formal vote or not.
Do you know, Jeff?
I don't know. The first I saw it.
The exemption date has already come and gone of April 1st, is that correct?
Yes.
I believe it was April 1st, yeah.
Um.
But the legislation wasn't filed and signed until after April 1st.
Right, to allow us to do this.
So, right.
This, this is one of those issues that requires a select board vote.
Right.
Correct.
Understood.
It's a local option.
But it, but traditionally, I would like to hear from the other elected board on its position of the article, so.
Right.
Hearing not, it's just an inconvenience at this point to the, to the point, but what did you hear from Mary, if you could offer that, Mary?
Well, it was just an email that Kathy had shared, asking if this was a possibility to have the select board accept.
Sounding like they were endorsing it or were interested in it.
They were interested in it.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Can I have a motion?
You move to, well, the motion would be that the select board vote pursuant to Section 10A 54 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 to extend the due date under general law, Chapter 59, Section 59, for applications for certain exemptions from April 1st, 2020 to a date not later than June 1st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mary, you want to walk, walk us through the next one?
So, the second one is the waiver of interest on certain payments made after the due date. This is primarily, primarily for excise tax bills, water bills, looks like some tax bills, any betterment or liens, that would be on the fourth quarter, on real estate bill, any bill that is due on or after May 10th, 2020. For us, that's basically our water bills, and we have excise tax bills that are out there. So, we have real estate bills that are due May 1st. Sorry for that. This would allow us to waive the penalties and any interest. Right now, for excise tax, we are waiving interest if people are sending in their payments without the interest that's due on some of them. Most of the time, it's less than a dollar on more expensive vehicles, and newer, it's up around five bucks, but it's not a lot of money.
Right. And you have the leeway and the authority up to $15, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
This just makes it more official and uniform across the board. It will, the water department normally would have had bills due May 15th. They've extended their due date to June 15th, but that would have stopped the late $10 lake fees, they didn't pay it by May 15th on that, and it stops the interest on any betterment or liens, and the real estate tax bills if we left them on May 1st.
But it, but it would be, the understanding, before June 30th?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
John?
No, sir.
May I have a motion?
Motion that the select board vote pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 to waive interest in other penalty for late payment of any excise tax betterment, assessment, or apportionment thereof, water rate, or annual sewer use, or other charge added to a tax for any payments with a due date on or after March 10th, 2020, where payment is made after its respective due date but before June 30th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And the last one, Mary?
The last one would allow us to change the due date on real estate taxes from May 1st to June 1st. I can go either way on this one. We get most of our payments, well, at least half of our payments from service bureaus that take the money from mortgage companies for escrow of tax payments, and that makes up at least half of our bills. Right now, we're at 75% collected on real estate, and a little more than that on personal property. I understand some people are struggling. In the past, we've always worked with residents who couldn't make their tax payments, so this one I'm going to leave up to you guys. I can go either way on this one.
Well, would the understanding be that if someone was having difficulty, they would call you and you would try to work out a payment plan, is that correct?
Exactly. In the past, what we always do, if they don't pay after the demand bills, we send out letters saying, you know, you have 14 days to contact us and enter into a repayment agreement, and we're pretty receptive to whatever you can afford to get you current.
Right.
My feeling is, don't make unrealistic promises, can't keep them, then you fall behind.
Right. Tina?
Yeah, well, there are two things that I'm really struck by. The first is that there are 135 families in Holliston accessing, accessing the food pantry for services. That's up from, I believe, their normal of about 90. So, I absolutely recognize that there are people who are struggling financially in Holliston, and I believe Mary does, and, you know, just about everybody recognizes that fact. I'm struck by that fact. I'm also struck by the financial advice that's given to individuals at this time, which is to, who are experiencing a reduction in income, which is really to keep cash on hand, so that you're never in a position where you are making a decision that affects your personal safety or your personal health in order to save cash. And so, when I think about that, I think about people who are making decisions to perhaps stock up on food so they don't have to go to the grocery store, or stock up on medicine so they don't have to go to the pharmacy, or who maybe are going to call in sick so they don't have to go to work if they're feeling under the weather. And I think about people in those situations and how having that extra cash on hand, if they're making those payments for their property taxes from their own accounts, how that gives them tremendous flexibility. So, for that reason, I'm very compelled to vote to delay the payments to June 1st. I do recognize, and Mary, thank you for this comment, I was also struck by the fact that it would be very disappointing to see that banks who are holding those who pay ahead, pay monthly into their escrow account, did not make the regular payment. It would be very disappointing to see that they also might defer until June 1st. I think that's the, I think that's the thing that we risk.
Yeah.
But I'm okay with that for helping out those who are in need, so I'm very compelled
Um, but I'm okay with that, uh, for helping out those who are in need. So, I'm very compelled to, to delay, um, the collection of property taxes until June 1st.
John?
I completely agree with Ms. Heine. Um, in addition, I think it's important for people to understand, all this is, is a 30-day reprieve.
Right.
It gives people a little bit of flexibility during these uncertain times to manage their cash. Um, and, uh, I want to echo something that the Finance Committee Chairman said, if, if we adopt this, the taxpayer who opts into this option now has 60 days to pay his or her bill for August 1st. The deferral doesn't impact the next quarter.
Right.
It is simply a 30-day window, gives them some flexibility to make the payment, and, um, I'm quite all right with it. I think it's, during this time, 30 days might be a big deal for some people. Um, so, it's something I'm willing to, to take, to take.
Do we have a motion?
A motion that the select board vote pursuant to Sections 10A, 1 through 3 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, to extend the due date of property tax bills under general law, Chapter 59, Section 57, and 57C, from May 1st, 2020, to a date no later than June 1st, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mary, and.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anything else under financial impacts that someone would like to talk about? No? Okay, we will move on to the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Jeff, you've been collecting.
Yeah, I mean, the, the closing or the deadline for submitting, uh, letters of interest for resumes for the committee was on Friday.
Yeah.
At noon time.
Right.
And, um, we got a list here, I think, of around 12, maybe?
And we need five, I believe. We owe it, maybe five, so.
At least for the moment, yep.
We need to, uh, we need to decide on five. Did you make any recommendations, Jeff?
There are 11, um, actually, one, there were actually 12, one withdrew.
Okay.
So.
Which one withdrew?
Lisa DeLucia.
Yeah, Lisa.
And do you have, uh, a recommendation for us, Jeff?
Well, the only thing, um, you know, there's a slot there that the school committee has requested for some representation.
Yes.
So, um, I am not prepared to make a recommendation as to individual people.
Okay.
At the moment, I didn't think I was, was going to do that, but if you want to, I can come up with five for next week.
Well, I think we should all give it some thought, um, as to who we think the five should be, and come prepared next week with, and debate it and decide.
Yeah, and you, you have to really look for the skill set, as I've said over and over again.
Yeah, we have the skill set that we created, the criteria, so.
Some are strong in human resources, some are strong in business, some are strong in leadership.
Financial.
Finance, so you don't want to have all financial people, for instance.
Right, right, right.
You want to have broad.
So, can you put it on the agenda next week?
Sure.
And then we'll choose the five.
Just for the record, phenomenal pool, great pool.
Yeah.
Very happy.
Really is.
Good, strong people on there, and.
That's for sure.
We'll have some, have some leadership in there.
Um, any other business, Mrs. Heine?
No, I mean, I, well, yes. So, I had made an edit to the capital request policy and was going to share it. I'm, I think it's fine to wait. Uh, I would just say that if we get anybody, any department in town that's asking for a little more time to prepare their capital request, that we offer some flexibility.
Sure.
It's an advisory policy.
Right.
And so, I don't think we need to be rigid with it. I, I would appreciate the opportunity to review it.
Well, I wouldn't say rigid, but I would say organized, because we do have to do things in a timely way.
Fair enough.
To be prepared for town meetings.
Fair enough, yeah, it's a fixed timeline.
So, it wasn't meant to be rigid. It was meant to be a structure that people could work with, but, um, you know, Ann Louise Halsted, uh, the Chair of the Finance Committee for the School Committee, mentioned to me in the summer at a meeting that she needs a little more time, and so, I, I think that's perfectly fine. Why don't we put that on the agenda for next week, too?
Hello.
And that we will, we will define that a little better?
Okay.
Yes. Did you say something? Somebody from the conference? No? Okay. So.
Hello.
Let's put that on the agenda for next week.
Hi.
Hi, who's this?
Who is?
Hello?
Who is?
Someone's answering the door.
Oh, they're answering the door.
Perhaps.
The stabilization fund.
Okay, so, if we could put that on the agenda.
Got it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, just want to let folks know, I'm going to participate tomorrow in the MMA, um, hosted, uh, Fourth Baker Polito Administration Municipal CEO briefing from 1 to 2 o'clock, listen in on what they have to say about the view ahead on, um, fiscal impacts as